Welcome, everyone. I would like to call this Bay County Board of Commissioners meeting on Tuesday, June 17th, 2025, at 4:00 PM to order. Madam Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Niemec, Begic.
Here.
Beeson.
Here.
Rupp.
Here.
Docket.
Here.
Crete.
Here.
President. Thank you, everyone. Please rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Almighty God, we ask that you will guide and give leadership to every member of this Board of Commissioners, and we ask that you will give them knowledge and understanding so that the decisions made today and always will benefit every citizen of this community. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Sheriff, to excuse Kathy Niemec.
Support.
Motion to be made and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, seen on, motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Begic. Now, on the minutes, I need a motion for the minutes.
So moved.
Support.
A motion's been made and supported, is there any corrections? Seen on, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, seen on, motion carries. The general approval. Need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion has been made and supported, is there any corrections? Seen on, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, seen on, motion carries. At this time, it's time for citizen input. Is there anyone wishing to address this commission? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Gabriel Rupin. I'm here today just to introduce myself. I am an applicant for the Bay County Library Board of Trustees. I'm a lifelong Bay County resident. I grew up in Essexville, and I currently own a home with my husband in the South End now. One of my goals has always been to have a little library. So when we bought our house in 2020, I was able to achieve that goal. And now I have a charter, a little free library, if you guys ever seen the little boxes. So I have one outside of my house. Couple of things about me, I know my application was in there, but just a couple of little things. I currently work for the Saginaw City Police Department. I'm the Victim Services Division Coordinator and the Grant Administrator for them. So I, part of my job is applying for researching and managing grants. So I spend a lot of time in budgets and in the community, at community fairs, just kind of getting what we do out there. So I just wanted to introduce myself. Thank you all for the time today in considering my application.
Thank you, Gabriel. Is there anyone else who is wishing to address this commission? Going once, going twice? Oh, come on.
Hi, I'm Lori Zolkowski. I'm with an organization called Face Addiction Now. I live in Auburn, and I just wanted to come and say thank you so much to the commissioners for providing us an opportunity to get opioid settlement funds. Those funds are going to be used here in Bay County to provide case management for people who are in recovery from substance use disorder. Our daughter Amanda, we're lifelong Bay County residents. Our daughter Amanda is now four years in recovery from a four-year IV hero, or nine years in recovery from a four-year IV heroin battle. Never in a million years did we think that would impact our family. She went to Faith Lutheran, graduated from John Glenn, just like we did. And this opioid epidemic has devastated our community, and there are so many of us here that are trying to help that. We appreciate your diligence in getting those funds out. We want to have more money come this way. The house is on fire. We are still in an epidemic. We were just at a conference about a month ago, ran by the PIHP, Midstate Health Network, which is the Medicaid provider for our 20 counties. And Bay County ranked highest in overdose deaths per capita, higher than any of the other counties covered. We have to change that. We have such a sense of urgency about this. Me, Renee, Ricardo Bowden coming from Pier 360s on his way over. There are so many of us who want to end this epidemic, and we need to use the full resources to do that. So we're just here to say thank you to everybody who allowed that to happen. If there's a way that we can assist with that, we're the experts in this. We're the ones who know how to help. If we can assist with getting the money out faster at a higher rate, that is something that we're all here to do. So we just wanted to say thank you for your diligence. Keep the money coming, please. This is not the time to let up off the gas. We're starting to see small declines in opioid deaths, but we're starting to see things like crack cocaine and methamphetamine and fake Xanax and fake Percocet 30s that are killing people. Just had lunch with a friend of mine today who lost her 30-year-old son last October. Just attended a funeral of a 20-year-old girl in Essexville a month ago. We are having people in their 30s who are spending more times at funerals than they are weddings. This is not the natural course of how my community runs. This is not how it was when I was here, growing up. We have to change this, and those funds are blood money. Those funds were given to us because people died, and people are still dying. So we encourage you to find a way to get more out. We'd love to have another request for proposal. We'd love to have that be longer than just one year. That would help us have some stability. It would also help your folks who have to do all the paperwork not have to do it every single year. So please, continue to bring the money forward. And Ricardo Bowden is on his way. I told him the wrong building. I was also at the wrong building, because I'm used to going to the city commissioners. So he's rushing over here too, to say thank you as well. But thank you. And if you have any questions, please let us know. And the other thing I'd like to offer, I don't know if there's Narcan available in this building. Narcan is a nasal spray. It should be with your safety kit. If you have an AED in this building, it should be with that, because you've got a lot of people coming through here, and we could be able to save life. So if you would like to be trained in Narcan, or would like to have it available for the building, you just tell me who to do that with. Renee is able to do that, I'm able to do that, Ricardo's able to do that. We want to make sure that we're prepared to save somebody's life if they would happen to overdose here in the building. So just putting that out there as an offer. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Laura. Here. Is there anyone else? Going once, going twice? Public input is closed at this time. Petitions, communications, we have a presentation from Jim Green for the President and CEO of Bay Futures. Welcome, Jim.
Appreciate you having me. My name is Jim Green, President and CEO of Bay Future. Hope you're all having a wonderful summer so far. That seemed to have started just yesterday, and are enjoying winning Detroit Tiger baseball. In Bay County, our summer event calendar is now in full swing. Awesome concerts, festivals, community activities. These are huge economic drivers in our community, and they bring in millions of dollars. And, you know, we want to really promote those and get the word out. Share that on your social media if you can. Today, I'm going to take a few minutes to explain what Bay Future's been up to and how we do it. My aim is that by the end of this presentation, they'll have a better understanding of what Bay Future is and how we can work better together. All right. I'm very proud of the team at Bay Future. We're not a very large team, but we're focused on moving the county forward every single day. Our operations manager, Sarah Prem, who it's her birthday today, and she would be embarrassed by me saying that here. She's an SVSU grad that lives in Frankenless Township, and has a wealth of organizational leadership and operations management skills that Bay Future relies on every day. Mark Hitchcock, Bay Future's Economic Development Manager, lives in Bay City, and he's a decorated U.S. Army veteran who completed his master's and bachelor's degree from Northwood. His background and education make him a perfect fit for his role at Bay Future. We're going to hear more about Michelle Judd later in the presentation, but her education and experience make her indispensable to us here in Bay County. So what does Bay Future do? Economic development can be really difficult to define, but most of us know it when we see it. In a nutshell, our mission is to increase the tax base, which in turn increases the services municipalities can provide to citizens. We also support job retention, career advancement, and connecting workforce and employers in the labor market. Our mission is accomplished by following these five tactics in our strategic plan. Our current strategic plan was created in 2020 in response to the community's key challenges at that time. The Bay Future Board of Directors is currently crafting a new strategic plan that will guide us going forward. I'm going to key in on a few of these strategic pillars and explain them in more detail. Workforce is a key factor, if not the most important factor, in every business, location, and expansion decision. Qualified labor is a strength for us here in Bay County. We have a work ethic that is tough to match. Some of you may have heard of the Going Pro Talent Fund. Going Pro is a competitive grant led locally by our friends at Great Lakes Bay Michigan Works. Going Pro can help companies with the cost of qualified training programs. Since 2020, Bay County companies have leveraged more than $2.5 million of these training funds. I'm a pretty competitive guy, especially when it comes to leveraging public funds to be used here in our community. These dollars are going to be spent somewhere in Michigan, and I would rather it be here in Bay County. Bay Future also relies heavily on partners that offer some highly significant training programs employers should be considering. Delta College is a vital local partner, offering programming like the Michigan New Jobs Training Program. The Michigan New Jobs Training Program is an economic development tool for new and expanding businesses, providing the ability to train their workforce at virtually no cost when they implement a training agreement with Delta College. The payroll tax, normally paid to the state of Michigan for these qualified roles, is instead diverted to pay for employee training. This results in thousands of dollars in prepaid training for new employees in qualified positions. Bay Future also partners with organizations like Saginaw Valley State University, Bay Airneck ISD, to build and maintain pathways from education to meaningful employment. Businesses and employers who are looking to relocate or expand often look at facilities or sites with developed infrastructure that will address their needs. Bay Future is tasked with keeping a list of these available sites and making sure they're ready to submit for potential projects. One way Bay Future has worked to increase the readiness of sites is by acquiring grant dollars to build out infrastructure or develop plans on sites. Since 2020, Bay Future has utilized more than $4.8 million in infrastructure grants aimed towards making sites more attractive to investors and businesses wanting to relocate or move or expand here in Bay County. We are currently working through a $248,000 grant that is specific towards conducting due diligence studies on marketable properties. Boundary surveys, environmental, wetland studies, things like this, provide a clear picture for developers, and it helps them mitigate risk and makes those sites much more attractive. Let's talk about some of the projects Bay Future is working on. Currently, we're working with Monitor Township, Bay County Department of Water and Sewer, Bay County Road Commission, and Spicer Group to use a $4.1 million grant to add much-needed sanitary sewer infrastructure improvements to the Three Mile and Wilder Road area. These improvements will not only help existing business, but will allow the attraction of new business to these, they were formerly agriculture parcels, but future land use zone commercial, and that's going to be a nice place for new business to go. Many of you may have never heard of HL Mechatronics. They've been doing business and growing in Bay County for more than 10 years. They're a global company and had very competitive offers from other states to relocate there. They chose to stay here in Bay County. Their new project in Williams Township will allow them to continue and grow and hire more and more employees. One stat worth noting on this project is that the average wage of newly hired employees is a robust $56.40 an hour, and that's for 43 new jobs. These are highly skilled, high-tech jobs that are becoming the norm in Bay County manufacturing. Every project needs partnerships to get across the finish line. The Michigan Economic Development Corporation, Consumers Energy, and Williams Township all play vital roles in getting this project over the goal line. Bay Valley Resort has been a mainstay in Bay County for years and years, but it fell on some hard times and has needed some love to get back to its former glory. Storyco is a visionary company that seeks out distressed resort properties like Bay Valley and specializes in restoring and enhancing them. With the help from the MEDC, the Bay County Brownfield Board, this body here, Consumers Energy, and Frankenless Township, Bay Valley will see a massive facelift to revitalize its 147 guest rooms, conference spaces, restaurant, and golf course. This project will add more reason to consider Bay County as a premier destination. A major component to meaningful economic development is strategy. Strategy is needed to create a blueprint and an actionable plan to drive growth in Bay County. Over the last few decades, Bay County has suffered population decline and with it, a stark decrease in commercial activity in once thriving areas. Waiting for chain restaurants and big box stores to arrive is not a viable solution. Local municipalities partnered with Bay Future will be able to set a course for recovery with meaningful strategies and actionable items. This project involves an analysis of demographic and socioeconomic trends, commercial and industrial market data, locational analytics, and benchmarking against similar successful markets. It also includes other strategic development plans and analysis, site readiness assessments, and a focus on attracting high-wage industries. How is Bay Future paying for this study? The lion's share of this project funding comes from dollars acquired through administration from a previous grant, and studies like this are not cheap, and choosing which areas to study is not easy. But we plan to conduct this work in several phases over the next few years to build a robust overarching package of strategies and renewed economic focus countywide. Last but certainly not least, the Small Business Development Center. Every small business is currently paying for Michelle to be a consultant on their staff. That's a fun way of saying that funding for her services comes from a variety of public sources, and they are in turn free to all small businesses. Michelle has met with more than 200 current and potential businesses and has secured more than $1.4 million in capital investment in Bay County. One of those services that SBDC offers is no-cost secondary market research to help businesses better understand and reach their target audience. Knowing the target audience is a critical step for any business to reach the right customers and generate revenue. There are many businesses out there who may be thinking they don't need Michelle's help, but they do. There's no shame or stigma in wanting to do everything possible to ensure success. Michelle's meetings are always 100% confidential. One way to help support the SBDC and the businesses who engage is by attending the Pitch by the Bay competition on Wednesday, November 12th, at John Glenn High School. These events are fun and exciting, and you get to witness local businesses joining our community right up there on the stage. Please help Michelle and the SBDC by referring these services to each and every business. I appreciate the opportunity to come down and speak to you today, and I hope you learned a little bit more about Bay Future and what we're up to. Please jot down contact information, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions from the commissioners? Let's bond.
Sanitary sewer project. You may not know the answer to this. I'm seeing some black lines on here where it's going to come, looks like it's going to come underneath the one section that branches off in 13, and then it's going to go out at Wilder Road and up and down. Are those, you know, those black lines are where it's going to be? There's some faint black lines on here, so.
The picture that was included in the packet is just a screenshot from GIS. That's nothing official.
Right, right. Yes, I'll go up there.
Yeah, it's, really, it's just coming down Wilder and then, yeah, you know, Don Scherzer from Spicer could give you all the engineer speak, which I'm not qualified. But when he explains it, I understand it for that moment, but, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, Jerry.
How about the Bay Valley Project? What's the status of that? Have they started working on that yet?
They've done some pre-work. They're just waiting for some final things from the MEDC for the state to tie in with the local incentives, and then they're raring to go. They're kind of like a horse in the chute, waiting for that bell to go, and then they're going to go running. But it's going to be wonderful. They've done some pre-work out there, so the golfers are kind of feeling they're starting to upgrade those exterior things, but the real work is going to be the interior work.
Thank you. Mr. Barsha.
Ron Campbell and I met with Mr. Nichols yesterday, and they're starting some of the work, especially, you know, with regard to the pool. And so I know the golfers are excited about the coming improvements to the golf course, but it's going to be a great, great, massive investment into Bay Valley. So we're very pleased that, you know, the brownfield redevelopment could help, and thank the board for their support, and also weighing in with MEDC on the education portion of withholding that over the next 10 years on the, but if we can get over that hurdle, I mean, it's all set there, forging ahead, but they're making good progress. And we'll see a lot in the next few months.
Yes.
Somebody's, I'm out of the water here the week, and you can see progress every couple weeks. They started to trim back a lot of the landscape, get the sprinklers back out, and they've hired a couple of Rangers, which I haven't seen Rangers out there in five years.
I don't know if anybody was able to participate. They had an estate sale on Sunday where they sold every old piece of anything that was in the facility. Lamps, mattresses, beds, desks.
All right, anybody else? Okay, thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Motion to receive is in order.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, on motion carries. Now, the next one is, we have our number 2025-113, Resolution Honoring the Life and Legacy of Don Carline. Madam Clerk, would you like to read that?
A resolution by the Bay County Board of Commissioners, whereas on May 27, 2025, the Great Lakes Bay region lost more than a man, it lost an institution, a guiding voice, and a living link to its own history. Don, Donald J. Carline, the longtime president of Delta College and one of Bay County's most influential civic leaders, passed away at the age of 100. And whereas originally from Nebraska, Mr. Carline arrived in Michigan with his wife Betty and joined Delta College in 1960 as business manager. In 1964, he became the college's second president, a role he held for nearly three decades, helping shape Delta into one of the nation's premier community colleges. And whereas known affectionately by many as the original pioneer, Don Carline's leadership was visionary, yet always grounded in humility and community. His work helped multiply access to education across county lines and generations. He led Delta into national recognition, co-founding the League for Innovation in the Community College, and launching one of the earliest fundraising efforts of its kind. And whereas the Carlines raised five children, they converted Barn on Campus, affectionately known as the Farmhouse. There, they welcomed students, neighbors, and visitors, offering barn tours featuring llamas, wallabies, and even lions, embodying Delta's spirit of openness and inclusion. And whereas throughout and beyond his presidency, Mr. Carline remained a beloved presence, proudly wearing his Delta College pin and Cornhusker belt buckle, and staying deeply involved with events like the Bay City St. Patrick's Day Parade, Delta's Chocolate Affair, and efforts to restore local landmarks like the State Theater and Battery Park. Whereas he was honored with Delta's Award of Distinction in 2014, and his legacy endures through the Donald J. and Betty Carline Scholarship Endowment, established by over 1,000 supporters in 1989. Whereas community leaders and citizens alike, through social media tributes, memories, and personal stories, have expressed how Don Carline became part of the very DNA of the region. If figure whose life ripples outward through generations, therefore be it resolved that the Bay County Board of Commissioners honors the life and enduring legacy of Donald J. Carline, a leader, mentor, and civic pioneer who shaped not just an institution but a region. Be it further resolved that this resolution be entered into the official record and presented to the Carline family with deepest condolences and lasting gratitude for a life spent lifting others.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, seen on, motion carries. Number C, this is the time for appointment to the Bay County Library Board. Commissioner Rupp, please. This time, we're going to appoint one person, a five-year term, so.
Do you need to raise the application first? I don't have that in motion.
We like to have a motion to receive.
I'll make that motion. The applicants.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, on motion carries. Applicants, okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I just wanted to disclose something just for transparency purposes. Mary Conley is my sister.
Okay.
I want everybody to know that. I'm not hiding that back.
Okay. Thank you, Jerry.
I'll just point out that our lawyer has said as long as you don't get any financial gain out of it.
I knew that, but I just, I just wanted to be transparent about it, and so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Ma'am Clerk.
Ready? We're going to start with Commissioner Begic.
Sherry Blutzow.
Beeson.
Sherry Blutzow.
Rupp.
Sherry Blutzow.
Docket.
Sherry Blutzow.
Crete.
Sherry Blutzow.
Benajak.
Sherry Blutzow.
Okay, so six votes for Sherry Blutzow.
Any a motion from somebody?
I'll make, I'll make the motion that we approve the nomination of Sherry Blutzow to Library Board.
Support. Okay. Motion to be made and supported. Any discussion? Yes.
I just want to thank the other two applicants. It's hard to get people to apply for these boards, and please keep applying to other things. We always appreciate it. You know, there's only one spot, so you have to pick somebody, but I always appreciate people stepping up, so thank you.
Thank you, Jesse.
And that's how my sister got on here, heard her to apply. I said, you know, it'd be nice to get you involved, you know, she likes to be involved in the community. I said, it'd be a good opportunity for you at that time. We didn't have any applications. I said, it'll be good for you, and I encouraged her to keep on applying for things as they come up, so.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. Anyone else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, seen on, motion carries. The reports and resolutions of committees. Commissioner Crete.
Resolution number 2025-14, I'd like to make a motion that we withdraw this motion. Support this resolution.
Motion has been made and supported. Any discussion? Seen on, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, seen on, motion carries.
Okay, resolution number 2025-115, Oliver Packaging and Equipment Company Agreement, 2025. I move this resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made and supported. Any discussion? Seen on, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, seen on, motion carries.
Item three, Resolution 2025-116, SCSEP Agreement, 2024-2026. I move this resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made and supported. Any discussion? Seen on, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, seen on, motion carries.
Resolution number 2025-117, NEMCSA Head Start Agreement, 2025. I move this resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made and supported. Any discussion? Seen on, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, seen on, motion carries.
Resolution number 2025-118, Bid Award for RFP 2025-01 for GL，在 inmate phone and video visitation services to Smart Communications. I move this resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made and supported. Any discussion on this? Seen on, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, seen on, motion carries.
And finally, Resolution 2025-119, Payables. I move this resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made and supported. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, seen on, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next one is Committee of the Whole, it's been transferred, it's been, the meeting was canceled, so it's referred to this meeting. So Commissioner Begic.
I have a resolution number 2025-120, Full Faith and Credit, Bay County Drain Commissioner. I move that resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made and supported. Any discussion? Yes, Vaughn.
Since we have the Drain Commissioner here, I'll ask him to explain the full faith and credit and all the bond and how it's funded and stuff, but pretty complicated process.
This resolution is full faith and credit of the Sheboygan Creek intercounty drain. Bay County actually has 14 separate drain districts that drain into the intercounty drain. Each and every one of these districts had to be remapped by the engineers, and we sent out over 3,000 letters to the landowners, basically explaining this to them, we're going to have a day of review on the 25th, where they can come in if they have complaints or questions. They come right into the office, we can show them the map, show them where they're at on the map, and basically they can see why they're being assessed. The project was let, it hasn't been awarded, but the project was let for $2.7 million. All the work's going to be in Saginaw County. It's mostly erosion control, taking trees and stuff out, straightening the flow of the drain. the drain. Some berm buildup because of flooding in the past. This project was petitioned in 2020, and because the original petitioner found out what it was going to cost, he decided he wanted to stop it. He took it to court and fought it in court for two years, which postponed everything and actually raised the engineering costs, attorney's fees, everything just went sort of skyrocketed. We estimated at the beginning, and I should say the engineers estimated at the beginning, it would run a little over a million dollars, and the bids come in at 2.7. But it's been five years in the making just to get this far, and probably the project will be completed in 2027. It's when the construction date will be done. And from our point, Bay County's standpoint, we're going to assess it on a one-year term. Saginaw County, because they're paying 72% of this project, will be assessing on the seven to 10 years, they aren't sure yet. But every year that assessing goes out, you're paying interest on those bonds and everything, so, and part in Bay County, I assumed, and I do still believe that with staying away from the interest and everything else involved, we can do a one-year assessment, it won't cost the people who are that much money, and they'll be done with it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Posting none? Motion carries.
Resolution 2025-121, Case Manager Position Hired at Second Step, Personnel and Criminal Defense. Move that resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made and supported. Any discussion? Questions? Seen none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seen none? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2025-122, HITS 2025, Handler Instruction and Training Seminar, Travel Requests, or the Sheriff. I move that resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made and supported. Any discussion?
I see our sheriff is not here, but I just wanted to mention that I've seen the dogs perform. I know at Frankenmuth, they have the dogs out there, and they'll put drugs in buckets and cover them up, and, you know, they, they can step them up pretty good, so I'm sure the training is worthwhile. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posting none? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2025-123, Fiscal Year 2026, Operation Stone Garden Grant, the Sheriff. Move that resolution.
Support.
A motion has been made and supported. Is there any discussion? Seen none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seen none? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2025-124, Justice Assistance Grant, JAG, Fiscal Year 2026, from the Sheriff. Move that resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made and supported. Any discussion on this? Seen none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seen none? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2025-125, 2026 SRP Grant, the Sheriff. Move that resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made and supported. Any discussion? Seen none? All in favor?
Aye.
Posting none? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2025-126, the Euphoria Payment Agreement, Recreation and Facilities, the Golf Course. I'll move that resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made and supported. Any questions? Kristen.
Kristen. Could you explain the reason for changing the processors that can save us some money? It is, yeah. So credit card processing is complicated and expensive, and our current processor, we selected a number of years ago when we went with ForeUp, because it's what speaks to the software system. So when someone swipes a card, the credit card, the software recognizes it and completes out the sale. Because it's so expensive, we have been inquiring about other options, and ForeUp actually has created their own payment credit card processing system called ForeUp Payments or something really simple like that, and this should be a pretty significant savings. I don't know that I can give you the dollar amount, because it all depends on like if a credit card or debit card or Visa or MasterCard, you know, gets processed, but it should save us a decent amount.
And right off the top, Commissioner Crete, we were being charged during non-peak season by the prior.
A monthly fee?
A monthly fee, which we were being told we would not be charged with this new processor. So, right there, saving.
That's some money, too.
Credit cards are the way of the world, but they do cost businesses a lot of money.
I know better than anybody.
I know. So.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seen none? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2025-127, Reports of the County Executive, May 2025. Move that resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made and supported. Any discussion? Seen none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seen none? Motion carries.
That is all.
Thank you, Commissioner Begic. Reports of the county officials, county executive.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not a lot, but I just want to say negotiations have begun with our 12 bargaining units. We're off to a good start, and I want to thank Tiffany and Amber and the team who are beginning that process for, with your support, a four-year contract, and that is going well. Also, our dog park, but I don't know if you've been by the fairgrounds or not by the shelter, but the dog park is up, but it is a work in progress yet. We don't have, a water line needs to be laid to, you know, facilitator of water for the animals in the park that the pets that come to use at the dogs. And, and I know Kristen is working on some other improvements along with MAD in terms of a little holding area like we had at the old park so that you can leash and unleash your pets as they go into the, the large animal section or the small animal section. Also, just want to compliment the team also, aside from Animal Shelter that leads our golf course. I know many of you golf out there and you've seen the improvements, and last year, we had a record-breaking 31,000 rounds of golf that were played at the Bay County Golf Course, and I think we're on track so far as long as the weather is conducive to maybe meet or exceed that number of rounds again this year. But other than that, I don't have a lot more to share, so, thank you, Mr. Chair, and hopefully everything is, is going well. We have, you know, a great season across Pinconning Park, Community Center, the rec program is well underway, and, yeah, so we're, we're really engaging, a lot of public engagement with the public, and most, most everyone's experiences are very positive, and they're, and I frequently hear compliments about the condition of our accounting facilities, so I want to thank the board for all of your leadership and support on that, as well as our cabinet and all of the employees that work for the county.
Thank you, Mr. Barsha. Thank you. Next is Commissioner's comments. Do any commissioner have any comments? Yes, Mr. Begic.
I had one about opioid settlement. I can see Lori's still here. So I just heard that Purdue, they settled the Purdue case now, and that was a big one. Purdue had a lot of stake in that, so sustainability is a big issue, and I agree with the three-year, three-year plan. I think we need to do a three-year plan so they can do a sustainable project, so we need to look at that when we go for our RFPs, and, and we're moving along slowly. We're, we're going to another administrative agent, I think, still in the process, so that takes a while to get things set up with them, and hopefully start getting the money out, because there still is a problem, as you said, and we're going to have a, a, a assessment tomorrow of deaths in Bay County. They have a committee that assesses any drug-related deaths and look over where changes could have been made, where that person maybe could have been got into treatment sooner or saved, so there's, there's one of those programs tomorrow that we'll be talking about how, how to go about it, so, see what we learn. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, when, when we started this last year, we had, we had this, we had a three-person subcommittee done on this, and we tried a one-year period to see how it was going to work, and if it's going to work out successful, and I recommend, and I also recommend a three-year term, that way we won't keep coming back, because we want to make sure that the organizations that the money was given to was sustainable going forward, not to start up a new one and then also run out of money. Somebody who was there would just keep them going. That was the thought process, and we're behind this when we did this. So, that's what we're planning on doing, so, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, unfinished business? Any new business? At this time, this is the second time for public input. Is anyone wishing to address this commission?
Well, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ricardo Vowden, I am the Director of 560 Recovery Alliance. Can you all hear me okay?
Okay, good. Yeah.
We have myself and Laurie Zierkowski.
Aye.
Last name starts with A, it's French.
Yeah.
We are all organizations who have benefited from the opioid settlement dollars. And what we wanted to say today, thank you so much for the work you all did. We know it took a while to get, to get, get it out in rolling, however, I know it wasn't idle time, it was a whole new process, and we appreciate your commitment to the journey. So, on behalf of all of us, we really just here to say thank you and look forward to doing the work and continue to make a difference in the community around opioid use disorder and other substance use disorder, so more families and more individuals can finally raise a healthier living, and we can prevent death and prevent more suffering. So, thank you very much.